Thank you, recorded. This is something when it's recorded.
Councilmember Jim Lindy, can you attest that we have a forum present?
Yes, sir, we do.
For being present, I mean, I declare this meeting open. And at this time, I would appreciate Mr. Max Kayler, Reverend Max Kayler, to give us an application.
Thank you, Your Honor. Let's pray. Our Father, as we bow before You, we remember the Psalm of one hundred and seventeen, the first two verses. Praise the Lord, all ye nations, extol Him, all ye peoples; for great is His love toward us, and the faithfulness of the Lord endures forever. Praise the Lord. And so, Lord, this City Council gathers tonight to do work for the city. We thank You for their efforts, for their willingness to serve, and just pray Your continued guidance upon them in wisdom in a way in which our city continues to prosper and grow. We thank You for each employee, from those who run the water department to the road department. Thank You for the way in which they serve this community. And, Lord, especially tonight, we thank You for Lonnie Waters' and seventeen years of faithful service to the city. Whether it's catching dogs, running down cats, or it's doing zoning, just thank You for His faithfulness to serve and to do whatever was needed, whatever He was asked. Continue to give Him Your blessing and Your grace as He continues his life in retirement. So, Lord, just honor the gathering tonight, be with our country in the election tomorrow, that we may be wise in our choices and that the people that are elected be worthy in Your grace to serve us. We pray in the name of the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit. And everybody say it.
Amen.
I'm going to ask Lonnie Waters if he will. Please, in our place of patience.
I pledge allegiance to the flag and to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and every being just for all.
Counsel, you have in front of you our agenda. I would entertain a motion at this time to adopt the agenda as presented. In a second, please.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion by council? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. The motion carries, Your Honor. Counsel, also in front of you is our consent agenda. I would entertain a motion at this time that we adopt the consent agenda as presented.
Motion to approve as presented.
Have a motion to approve as presented. I need a second.
Second.
Second, thank you, Lord. Any further discussion by council? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. And that motion at this time carries. Ladies and gentlemen, it now becomes my duty and my honor to discuss with you and recognize the retirement of Lonnie Waters. Seventeen years of faithful service. I knew his father. Another good man. So, I want to give you my personal thanks for everything you've done for this city and for your friendship. At this time, I would ask other members of our council, those that would like to say a few words, and we will listen greatly to them.
Hon, I sent it to you before, and I'll say it publicly. I appreciate the support you gave me in the time that I was at City Hall and made things a lot easier than often it should have been. I appreciate your support and friendship.
Counsel, anyone else?
Lonnie, I enjoyed serving with you on the Chamber of Commerce. A lot of the things that fell into place to start this journey that we've been on in these last six or seven years started there. You were at the seat when we were making tough decisions back then. And despite the challenges that we faced in making change in our city, you were always trustworthy and available for information, never violating your trust in me or others. It was very admirable trait of folks. And I appreciate everything you've done for the city and for me, my family, and look forward to continuing our friendship forever. So, congratulations and thanks for your service.
Thank you, sir.
Any other member of council?
Lonnie, I appreciate everything you've done over the years. You've been a peacemaker, got the job done what needed to be done during tough times. Storms are out there, you cut the trees and drag them, bringing out combs. The good times, all the Saturday nights that we grew uptown. I mean, you've done a lot of work, a lot of good in this community. I should appreciate you.
Thank you.
Thanks for my straight sign, too. Lonnie, at an auction, Lonnie, I let Lonnie's son go to sign. Lonnie, I'm in. And then gave it to him.
Any other comments by council? If not, I'll ask for any comments from anyone in our audience. Sean?
I'm not going to say too much because I'm afraid.
See, that's a card signed by all of us, so thank you. Anyone else? If not, then we're going to have a brief recess while we all come off the dais, and we're going to take some pictures for you and for us to go together and present.
It's allergies, isn't it? Oh, I don't do that. Don't blame me, I'm allergic to toast.
And I have here a plaque. And this says, "Congratulations on your retirement, Lonnie Waters, in appreciation of your seventeen years of dedicated service with the City of Jasper, presented by the City of Jasper Mayor and Council as of this day." Thank you so much.
Here, you get here, man.
Okay, big smiles, one, two, three. Perfect.
Thank you.
It's amazing how you get it with one when there's a certain newspaper photographer in you. I would have shot it different for everybody, but that's.
Good thing we didn't have Max doing that. We'd have had to go by eleven tonight.
I wouldn't have Lonnie coming up.
But the picture was looking good.
Yeah, he went going back to progress without a good picture either.
So, we have no one's business. And this time, I'm going to open our council to a public hearing. This public hearing is the proposed 2023 budget. And I'll ask if anyone from the public has any comments about our budget. I'll ask Sonya and Lindsey if they will bring this to us.
Well, we have before you the recommended 2023 proposed budget. We have included all of the items in there that we will need to operate the city with for the coming calendar year. And we are requesting that City Council approve it as presented.
At December seventh.
Any comments from our public at large? This would be your occasion to step forward and talk about our budget, which we're tired of talking about. If not, no further comments, and I will close the public hearing for the budget. And we will adopt that at our next regular session.
Is there one more public hearing?
This was our second, I believe. We've already had one.
A step on.
It will be here later.
And the budget is available, just for public information. The budget is available here at City Hall if anybody wants to see it. So, under new business, item number one, consideration approval of appointments for a housing authority. I'm going to set this up and then ask for some more discussion. We have two vacancies on the housing authority. One of those is due to the death of Vons Farah. And we are going to recommend Stephanie Pitts to fill the unexpired term of Mr. Farah. And that term would end in September the eighteenth of 2024. And the next one is the appointment of Mary Cantrell, who requests reappointment to them. Both of these people have been contacted and both have agreed to serve. So, I appreciate them doing that. I did have a conversation with the chair, who also recommends both of these people for their new terms. So, if that being true, then we are also going to consider tonight a different way of doing boards because we might have a difficulty sometime making sure that we get the right people on the right board or meeting those who won't serve. So, that being said, I'm going to ask our Mayor pro temp Kirk Raffield to set this up for us, if you will.
Thank you, Mayor. So, the idea behind our boards and commissions within the city are to serve our community for the greater good and the benefit of everyone inside of it. The key point is that these individuals are willing to serve, which the mayor mentioned, which is a huge part of this. As an organization, we are always looking for ways to better increase public engagement and education on how we operate and how we can continue to operate in a more efficient or effective manner. So, what I would suggest is, along with this appointment being considered this evening, we could look for our administration in the City Manager's Office, ask them to prepare information and steps for a procedure where we have public input, engagement, and buy-in. The educational component can be the requirements that are necessary for someone to hold these positions. They can go through a vetting process and then proceed accordingly. Our entire goal is to be transparent and to work with the public. So, we want the public to know what these boards and what these commissions do. Part of that's going to be advertising with these open positions rather than us having private one-on-one conversations. When we move forward, there's a vacancy, this elective voting will be notified, and then the public will be notified. And everyone that's interested will have the opportunity to engage us and apply with a letter of interest and whatever the City Manager deems appropriate. So, that would be my suggestion, is that we lean on our administration here to create that process.
We're up to the task. We can, we already have some thoughts on setting up a planning process.
So, as we move forward, we're doing different things in different ways. And this will be the second one of those changes this week that I've run into. So, we'll make those work for us and work for everyone else. Transparency is something that we're all concerned with, we all want. Obviously, it's going to be incumbent on the city to get good people to serve. And we hope that by doing an outreach like this, that we will attract some who want to come forward. So, at this point, I would entertain a motion to approve Stephanie Pitts to fill the unexpired term of Vons Farah and to approve Mary Cantrell to, as a reappointment, to her position on that board.
Salute.
And I need a second.
Second.
Any further discussion by council?
It is a legal question. I'm supping, do you need a motion for each, or is one covering that?
I think you can just do one motion covering.
Awesome, thank you.
The change in procedure, David, is that something we need to have in the charter? Would that require a change to the charter?
Don't think it would require a change in the charter. You wouldn't want to approve a formal administrative policy. I'd need to look to be sure the charter language doesn't require you to do it by ordinance. But when we amended the charter, I think I took out an ordinance requirement and do it by resolution. So, I think you're okay.
It being in the medics should satisfy.
But I'll check to see what the charter says.
Mr. Mayor, may I add something? Just for the benefit of the staff, some of these appointments are constitutional appointments. And as a matter of fact, this is one governed by state law. I think our DDA appointments are also governed by state law. But many of them are internal to the city. So, it is one of those places where we have to bow to the state when we're making our processes formalized. But look forward to seeing that happen.
Any further discussion by council? I have a motion and I have a second. All in favor, please say aye. Opposed, same. And the motion carries. I will attend their next meeting and swear in both of those candidates as we are required by law to do.
I think that's the organization's one that I probably know the least about of all our entities, that we have any kind of input on. That's the one that I need to learn more about. One of the ones I need to learn more about.
Item number two, under new business, consideration approval of new alcohol license for Hiven Vine LLC. And we'll ask Mrs. Lindsey Williams to bring this to us. Good evening, Lindsey.
Good evening, Mayor and council. So, we have a business, Hiven Vine LLC, which is going to be located at 57D North Main Street. They have made application for a wine specialty shop alcohol license. The applicant has met all the requirements, and there were no disqualifying factors. So, staff is requesting the approval for this wine specialty shop license.
Counsel, I entertain a motion to accept this or approve this new alcohol license for Hiven Vine LLC.
Make a motion to approve alcohol license for Hiven Vine LLC.
Second? Motion and a second. Any discussion by council? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. The motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number three, consideration approval of employee Christmas bonus. We'll ask Mrs. Sandra James to bring this to us. If you will, please.
Absolutely. Good evening, Mayor, members of the City Council. I'd like to start the address of this agenda item with one of my favorite quotes. "It's appreciation is a wonderful thing. It makes what is excellent and others belong to us as well." We have a group of city employees who take such great pride in their jobs that their excellence moves the ladder, up the ladder, to reflect favorably on all of us every single day, from the most mundane of tasks to the most visible of undertakings. Because it is such an intangible asset, there's no quantifiable measurement tool for assigning value to our staff, unlike assigning value to a tangible asset like submitted to you in the recommended budget this evening. Our staff are on the front lines when tending to the city's affairs and always persevere in their attempt at excellence. These are hard times that our nation is facing, and the holidays are just around the corner with prices skyrocketing. I'm requesting that you reward how far they have come this year at striving for that excellence by approving a budget amendment in the 2022 budget to provide staff with a $500 holiday bonus to help them value their families this holiday season, just as we value them.
I very well put. And thank you. Counsel, at this point, I would entertain a motion to approve amending the 2022 budget to reflect our employees' Christmas bonus.
Salute.
Second. Motion by Kirk, second by Jim. Any discussion by council?
This second will be 500, taxes or without taxes.
That will be net, 500 net, will cover the taxes as well.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Opposed, same. And the motion carries unanimously. I'm going to modify it a little bit, make it feel our employees, if it was unanimous.
Yes, sir.
It was also enthusiastic.
Yes, sir. Thank you, sir. Thank you, Kansas. Thank you.
Committee reports, Development Committee, Committee of Councilmembers Kirk Raffield and folks in Proctor.
Not much to add for Development Committee. Obviously, we're losing a valued employee, and that position has been posted. There has been some interest already. And we're still in the middle of a moratorium. And that's really all I have to state now, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Kirk?
From a Development Committee standpoint, had a conversation with a citizen this week. Where the conversation began, we had differing opinions. They approached me with a conversation relating to our development and how a lot of communities around our state and our nation have unsustainable growth, and it explodes. And that was their example. And by the time that the conversation was over, this citizen left with the understanding that this body and this organization, our employees, are doing everything and anything within our capabilities of having sustainable growth, making sure that our community is vibrant. And so, once the explanation was given of what the moratorium is doing, what the revised ordinances and codes are doing, I think down to the educational component, they walked with a better understanding. So, I'm very proud to serve on this committee. I'm thankful for it.
Thank you. And I appreciate the outreach there that you do to others because we all get those questions. And I think it's imperative that we try to teach everyone that we can that we're doing all that we can. We're not saying we don't want any growth, but we are saying we want to manage our downtown so that it stays somewhat like all of us know that it's, that we want it to. And we also want to manage our other growth as our laws allow. Thank you, Kirk. Street and Parks Committee, councilmembers Ann Stavey and John Bass.
We don't have a whole lot of update on this right now because we need to have another meeting and discuss the parks.
Okay. And our city manager, is it? She knows that, so.
Yeah, we are, I'm trying to work with the City Council's schedules to.
Yeah, it's kind of chaotic right now with the holidays. And everybody's work scheduled, yeah, meetings and all that. So, hopefully, we'll get that within the next month.
Jim, anything to add?
That Street and Parks are.
Oh, that's John.
You know, John.
We're still working, and we're still talking, and we're still planning. We're not going to rush in anything. We're going to let Sherwood go to the roadmap, and we're going to pretty well follow their roadmap because we want to do it right.
We appreciate that. Administration Committee, repeat Jim Lindy and Ann Stavey.
Thank you, counsel, for your approval of the Christmas bonus for employees. That was discussed and requested through the Administrative Committee. And I think that's all the action we've had this month. Thank you, again, thank you for approval.
Okay. Thank you so much. Water Wastewater Committee, about to Proctor and John Bass.
I want to kind of divide these up in water and sewer. As relates to water, I think we're moving forward with our Cherokee collaboration. And I think David's working on updating some of our equipment to make sure we can maximize that opportunity. We continue to work with EPD on resolving some of the issues as it relates to increasing our permit, which we're very close to completing, I believe, withdrawal permit. We continue to explore opportunities for reinstating the use of our mines. All that is going to be probably a long and drawn-out procedure because it's never been done in the state before. We still are hopeful that that will occur. And we also are exploring the possibility of some additional mines. So, we continue to diversify on our waterside. We need some rain. We need some rain. Or we're barely getting over, some days, I guess, not getting enough over the dam to sustain taking it from the creek. And so, we continue to draw from the mines, and they're, they continue to drop. Sewer, been an exciting month as it relates to our sewer wastewater figure plan. We've got the temporary financing in place. And so, now we have the, all things in place to pay for the sustaining, which is exciting. Had a preconstruction meeting, I can't remember if that was before our last meeting or since, but I think it was a very good meeting, talking about the start dates for both the forced mine and also the plant itself. And we are very close to, with some adjustments, to obtaining the easements we need for our forced mine to the outflow. So, all those are exciting developments that continue to, although sometimes it seems slowly, they continue to look forward. So, that's all, sir.
Thank you. Is there additional to fast?
Not, I've covered it very well.
Public Safety Committee, Kirk Raffield and Jim Lindy.
I think the only thing we have to report there is that the bids on the addition to the firehouse were higher than what we expected. So, some studying going on concerning that and what our actions may be, whether to drop that project and look at some other opportunities or continue. So, we will get some information to counsel all that as we're able to pull it together. But the bids were very high, and it's disappointing, but that's just where the economy is right now.
Thank you, sir. Kirk, anything to add?
From a public safety standpoint, the only thing I'll add is with working on our existing station, it's exciting for the potential of a new station in the future.
And I'd like to tie along on that as well. I'm trying to schedule a meeting, but I would like to show appreciation to our public safety for what a fine job they did through the Halloween holidays. They deserve a lot of kudos for community policing and community engagement from our firefighters as well.
Thank you. Pro Park Committee, Jim Lindy and folks in Proctor.
We had our first meeting with the, when we got our contract signed for the design firm, we had our first preliminary meeting, setting the timeline, and look forward to having more meetings soon. We will, we're looking on how we reengage our pro-part committee that's been engaged really since this was the concept. And then the architects are excited about beginning to work on some conceptual design things. So, all very strapping, excited. Bathroom's in the same breath. I think we're expecting some documents by the mid-November was the last update. So, our bathrooms. So, bathrooms.
Jim, anything?
It's never in ones.
Counsel, any motion to enter into executive session for the purposes to discuss a new estate and personal.
Shall we move? Second.
Motion to the second, all in favor?
Aye.